Okay, we're gonna stand up and say to the legislature.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And to start with, we're going to open this up to a public forum. This is not the open meeting. This is just if anybody is here for any other reason, you've got two minutes to speak. If not, we're gonna move over. And we're going to get approval of the agenda. Don, did you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Maya?
No.
Julie?
No.
No, Mr. Mayor.
And Jenny?
No, Don's gonna bring it up in his part.
Don's gonna bring it up, okay. Then we'll move to entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Whoever you want right now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries. All right, the agenda is established. Can't accept the agenda. Did anybody have any questions concerning anything on their claims? If not, then entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries. Now, we're gonna have the public hearing on the Army Reserve. The main reason I wanted to just open it up to the public is just to get input from the public. To see how they feel. If they're interested in it, or if we just let it go on the market and let, you know, the private industry handle it, or whatnot. So, Mr. Gerke, did you have any questions concerning that?
Well, what can you build on it if you wanna build it in that lot?
It's zoned right now, R1 and R3, which would be, you can put a house on it or an apartment building, but nothing else. There can't be any commercial.
Duplexes, condos.
Yeah, duplexes, condos, whatever that allows them.
Unless the city buys it.
Unless the city buys it.
Then it would stay public, semi-public. Or the city, a school, a church, something like that.
County, I suppose.
Yeah, county, yeah. And then it'd be used for whatever the city chose.
Or the county.
Or the county, or whoever else.
Say, for instance, the city would buy it, would you leave all them fences around there, or would that be taken away?
You know, that's... I don't know. You know, we're having these meetings to get input from the community. Would we want the fence there? Would we not want the fence there? Would the city buy it for storage, or something like that? Maybe then you'd wanna leave the fence up, maybe not, because of the way it looks. I don't know. That part hasn't been talked about. Mainly, is it something that the residents in the city think that the city should possibly purchase for future use, or using it as a community center, or as a school name for parking? Whatever. But if we just want an input from the community to give us little guidance. Maybe the guidance is very little input, and no one is interested in it, and we just let it go for sale. But that's why we had the meeting last Wednesday morning. We were having this open meeting. And then, I think, once they have the open houses over there, we may have one more public meeting, or an open meeting, just so that, if there's any other input after these.
Did you, did you get a chance to look at the fence ordinance? Is that, that fence is over height, right?
It is over height, yeah.
For residential. So it would have to come down, or be lowered if it was sold to a private entity.
Yes.
And the razor wire would definitely have to come off.
Well, one of the things we talked about, too, I think, was that if the city owns it, we, we don't want it to look...
Like a dump.
Bad. There, there won't be half a dozen or more vehicles sitting there, and, you know, it, it should look well kept.
Keep the lawn mowed. I mowed up some of it up to the fence a couple of years ago. My wife didn't look at it anymore.
And your concern is how...
Trust me, I see it, it makes my head spin, too.
I think that meeting last Wednesday was, you know, a good meeting. You know, if you heard anything about the dates, you're, they're gonna have open houses.
Jenny, you'll let us know, and something will be in the paper also concerning that.
Yeah.
You notify the paper, so...
And if they don't advertise it, I certainly will.
You know, I just hope the public comes out and speaks.
I do, too. I mean, if we don't hear anything from the public, does that mean they just want us to let it, to let it go? And I have, it makes no difference to me one way or another, but I just, I would like some input from the community.
I'd like to see some property tax on that bad boy.
Currently, there is no property tax, because it's all by the government.
Right.
And if the city purchased it, we wouldn't be paying property tax either.
And they can call City Hall, too. They don't have to wait for a public meeting.
Correct. Yeah.
Or email, or whatever.
Talk to any of us.
There is no date settlement, it will be sold.
I think it's gonna be, go ahead, Jenny.
Well, it's gonna be early April. Yeah, but, you know.
It is early April.
I know, and I haven't heard. I think what they're waiting for is to get the appraisal done. And once the appraisal's done, then they will have a...
Starting point.
Yeah, a minimum bid, and then they will start the process.
But then the online auction goes for several weeks, right?
Six to 10 weeks.
Will they have a minimum bid, or will they have, you have to have $10,000 to...
They'll have a buy-in to get in on it?
Yeah, and then you think they'll set a minimum bid.
That's why they need the appraisal.
They aren't gonna tell us what the appraisal is, but it will be used as a guide for the minimum bid.
Really?
Yes.
Would you have any idea, I suppose you don't, what you would be willing to put in a bid for what amount of money?
Look, that, that's one reason we want input from the community. But it's hard, how do you, you know, how do you decide what it's worth?
Yeah, I know.
Before we're gonna get the money to buy it.
Yeah, you know, is it better being sold to a private party where they may do something with it than, like Dale said?
You know, I've seen, I, I have seen a lot of those properties that either turned into junkyards, or have been turned into community housing. I have seen it.
And there, there's no covenants on the building. It can be torn down and, and divided into lots, or whatever, so...
Or used as their own community center.
That's a pretty solid building yet.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You ain't kidding, Bob.
Do you talk to the realtor once in a while?
The shop's a little shaky.
So what if, just, just for numbers, say that, they say the minimum bid is $50,000. Somebody says, I'll give you 30. Will even accept the 30? Or, you know what I'm saying?
What he told me was, all bids will be considered.
Okay.
Because I just can't, you know, if they come in at 50,000, that's a lot of money for that. I mean, if...
Well, I understand, Kelly, but it just...
I mean, try to develop it and put it into lots. Goodness gracious, if we can't get $1,000 out of it, away. I mean, who's gonna tear it down and...
And try to fill in the hole.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot to fill. That sucker's low back there.
It is.
Yeah, it does hold water.
Water's standing in there all the time when it rains a little bit.
You know, let alone getting the tar out of there.
But you know what? Maybe somebody else has a better idea. Maybe they can make money on it.
Yeah, they could, they could, they could fill it, put an apartment building there, use the front one as a community center, put the garages on the backside of the parking lot, and they got all the parking and driving they need for a nice apartment building. They do. You know, but...
Yeah, so that's why we're hoping to have more input from the community, get a little more guidance on what they want us to do. And again, if we don't get enough input, you know, it'll be up to council to decide what they want to do, but maybe it's just something they let it go.
I would say we should bid a dollar.
Don't give away how much you're willing to bid.
Come on, Bob's gonna bid two.
You know, someone's gonna go two.
We'll go three. We're stopping at six.
Now, will it be a deal where, if there are more bidders, that they can raise their bid, or is just what comes in?
No, it'll be like an eBay style, where you will bid, and you'll see the low bid, but you won't know who's bidding on it. And he also said to avoid, you know, like, the last minute, everybody bidding at once.
Sniper.
Yeah, they will have a 24-hour rollover, so if somebody bids at the end, when it closes, they'll wait 24 hours to give everybody else a chance to bid. And they won't stop the bidding until there's, there has gone 24 hours with no bid.
Same as the junkyard.
Write that down, Dave.
I like it, though, you know, gives everybody an opportunity to decide what they want to do.
Maybe they won't get enough to pay the realtor that's got it listed up.
Well, I'm sure he's tired of trying to sell it. You know, if you wait two years, you could probably get it for nothing.
We, we just don't know, so... That's why we're hoping to get input from the community, so I appreciate you doing that. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Thanks for mowing the lawn.
Yeah, I just hope the public come forward, you know, when you have these other open houses, or...
We had a great turnout the other day.
We did. I was happy with that turnout the other day, and hopefully we get another one, and, you know...
We will, we'll do that. And, and again, you know, to me, the question is, if the city would get together, there's a number of things we can do, but there's no way we can decide all of that until you have the building. So the question is, do we let the public handle it, or do we, do we get involved, so...
That's why you guys get the big bucks, to get paid.
When that happens.
As long as we're...
We appreciate it, too.
Can you like the legislature and get a committee?
Oh, get a committee, yeah.
Can we appoint a committee?
Ringer.
Yeah, we just missed that one.
I would like to ask, as long as we're talking about businesses and stuff, how are we doing with the Bauer? I'd like to ask council about the Bauer building.
Can we wait till EDA report for that? Would that be okay?
Yeah, Don's got...
Well, I can answer a question. So I, the last, where we left this was in early February. There was, you know, the family dispute about there was a brother that didn't want the building to be given to the city. So, they ended up going in the court. They settled the family dispute, and everyone's in an agreement that the property can be transferred to the city. So, in late, in, in February, I had talked with the attorney, and said that he was going to, the attorney for the trust. The attorney was gonna do up the paperwork, send it out to his client who lives in Arizona. She would sign the paperwork, get it back to him, and then the attorney would do the deeds and everything else necessary to transfer title. So, I waited about three weeks, hadn't heard anything, so for the last three weeks, I've been calling every week, just to try and get an update. This afternoon, I finally got an update from the attorney, who said he's sent the documents to his client, she hasn't returned them yet, and he's been trying to call his client, but she must be traveling, because she's not answering calls or emails. So, long story long, the paperwork's with the trustee, and she needs to sign it and get it to our attorney. That's where we're at.
But it looks like it's moving forward slowly.
Sitting on her desk.
I'm trying to pause this thing, right?
It's farther along than it was last month.
Well, if the positive is, is that the legal disputes are all done.
Good.
So, it's just a matter of getting paperwork signed.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question, Rob.
There's only one thing, this, I'm gonna just mention, and I'm gonna leave this, probably it got nothing to do with the Army, but I wish some of those houses would get, lots would get cleaned up, and the one that bothers me the worst is the one standing next to First Lutheran Church. It's a mess, is what it is, so, you get on that stick.
I want to, I, please, believe me, we are always working on it. We are always working on that, and it is a challenge.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I like the way he kinda hides it behind the trees.
Okay, we are gonna get into new business. I think we're all done in other room. Issuing bonds, Shannon?
Can't have any phone at the meeting when you're in charge. Jeez.
Good evening, mayor members of the council. Per your last direction, the last time I saw you, we went to market for a competitive sale of bonds to fund your 2017 street and utility reconstruction project. Believe we'd projected about a 3.05% rate. We received three bids this morning for the purchase of your bond issue, with the low bid being from United Bankers Bank at a net interest rate of 2.9337%. So, a little bit under projection. There was quite a spread, as far as bond sales go, between the low and the high bid, which was a bit surprising to us. We usually see a little bit tighter margin between bidders. This leads us to believe maybe we had somebody that bid a little bit more aggressively than normal, and so we, we do think it is a good bid. United Bankers Bank has been an aggressive bidder of late on issues that we sell for small rural communities. They seem to be a pretty good customer. They are an entity that essentially serves at the pleasure of their member banks, which tend to be small community banks scattered around greater Minnesota. And they have a trading desk that acts on behalf of those small banks, so it wouldn't be a surprise if a fair amount of this bond issue was being placed in area banks that were aware of the project and wanted to participate by purchasing the city's bonds. So, we, you know, our recommendation ultimately is to award the sale to United Bankers Bank. But before we ask you about that, and the resolution that was in your packet, Jenny wanted me to discuss briefly the process that we went through for issuing bonds, which included purchasing a credit rating from Standard and Poor's. As we've discussed in the past, a credit rating costs us a significant amount of money in this process. It's, in this instance, I believe it was around $10,000.
$9,500.
$9,500. And ultimately, why do we spend that money? To have a firm in Chicago call, ask us a bunch of questions, and make our lives miserable, make Jenny's lives miserable for a couple of days, and responding to those questions. If we were to not purchase a credit rating, the interest rate on this bond sale would probably be about 3/4 of a percent higher. And on a million bucks, that's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars in additional interest over the life of this deal. And so, purchasing that credit rating ultimately does result in interest savings. We wouldn't recommend it if we didn't think it, it wouldn't produce a positive result, because we hate the process as well. But ultimately, we think it's worthwhile, because it produces something that gets us a lower interest rate and lower overall cost of borrowing. Now, through this process, Standard and Poor's goes through a lengthy analysis with regard to strengths and weaknesses in your ability to repay this debt. Things that most impact, have the most impact, or the greatest impact on your credit rating are the amount of cash that you have in reserves, the amount of debt you have outstanding, and their view of your economy. Now, if you read through the report, their view of your economy was poor. They said you have a weak economy, because it's concentrated in one industry, agriculture. And so, ultimately, their view of your economy was weak. Your household incomes are below state average, so they would find that to be weak as well. Your housing prices are below state average, so they would find, those are things that they're always, they're gonna hold against you in this credit rating process. Additionally, they would consider your debt outstanding to be high. So, those are the negative aspects of what they're picking apart in this report. Positives are mostly focused on the cash reserves that you keep. You keep healthy cash reserves as a community, and that helps you get an A-plus credit rating. Fastest way to lose that credit rating would be to spend down those cash reserves in a significant manner. And so, ultimately, at the end of the day, that's probably your greatest asset. Second-best asset we probably have is that there hasn't been a default on a general obligation bond in Minnesota. And so, you know, Minnesota in general pays its debts, even small rural communities. And so, at the end of the day, I believe that we're known for that to some extent, and that helps us out a little bit, too. So, I hate to focus on the negative, and part of the reason why it's, you know, it appears negative is, you know, think of it this way, you're probably one of the smallest communities that Standard and Poor's rates. In the whole scheme of things, they're typically rating very large cities across America, and they're doing, you know, an analysis to determine their ability to repay. I have rated smaller communities in Winthrop, because it was worth it. Again, that credit rating produces an excellent interest rate. Your credit rating is probably above average for communities your size, at an A-plus.
What is the highest rate, A-plus?
Triple A.
Triple A.
Yep, and then it goes down in triple A minus, and then to double A plus, double A, double A minus, yeah.
If we're looking at our interest rates that we receive now, that we have received, what if we add A-plus plus? What it means?
The, the next, uh...
A-plus plus.
No, you, your next step up would be a double A minus. A double A minus would get you about a tenth of a percent better. So, instead of a 2.93, we'd probably be at a 2.85, or something like that, which, you know...
If we went down...
Pay for the rating.
If you went down a step, you'd be up about 10 basis, it's about 10 basis points a step. A tenth of a percent. Yes. So, you know, it's a couple grand a year in interest payments.
It pays for itself.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, at the end of the day, they said you were A-plus stable, positive outlook, so ultimately, you know, they don't have significant concerns at this time that you're heading in the wrong direction. And so, you know, we didn't hear anything that was alarming through this process, anything that they've said different about us in the past, anyway, so...
So, if we, if we'd spent $10,000, would that help us? Would you say we'd get a better credit rating?
You, you did spend the 10 grand to purchase this A-plus credit rating. Yeah, yep. And so, you did benefit, because if we hadn't done that, then the interest rate would probably be between 3.5 and 3.34% rather than 2.9%.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, and that's a whole bunch more than even that half, or tenth of a percent that we're talking about. We're talking about a half percent jump, at least if it's not rated, so... At the end of the day, it's worth it, otherwise, again, we wouldn't subject you to this, or myself, so... We have nothing to gain through that process, believe me.
Even when I email you, 10 to 5 on Friday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, I would just mention that, you know, they do, there's, there's positive stuff and negative stuff in this report. Take heart in the fact that you're above average for communities your size, and that's due to the cash reserves you keep and the good financial management. So, I would, I would tell you honestly, if I thought you were getting into trouble and doing anything that was putting you in a position to be below average, but you're not doing that, so...
I wouldn't think anytime you come in under...
Under 3%. Yeah, we should feel good about that, yeah. You know, ultimately, that's when you probably wanna do projects, because at some point, we'll probably be back at 7, and then we won't wanna do so much, so... So, the net result was at 2.9337%. It was a bid by United Bankers Bank. It essentially did not change the finance plan I presented at the last meeting for the project, just slightly. It'll be, you know, a few hundred bucks a year in interest difference, but it's about the same. We have a resolution in your packet updated today with the information from the low bidder, and we do recommend you approving that resolution to award the sale.
Entertain a motion. So moved. Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Now, proceed the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon, we appreciate all any more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for giving us a good discount.
Thanks.
I'll fire this one now.
Yeah.
Did you need the, do you want the resolution?
No.
I don't need the resolution.
How did this work? One, one company didn't realize the Fed raised the rates?
That actually gets priced in long before it happens.
I just...
So, yeah.
And it's more a fear of inflation that affects the interest rates that you paid, so, nobody seems to be scared of that yet, so, that's good.
Thank you very much, Shannon.
Gee, maybe we should look at the next sewer project.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Shannon, I'll tell Joe tomorrow.
Can we double that? Oh, Joe'd be happy.
Yeah.
He'd get a, he'd get a couple years ahead on his plan.
We do, you know, on the serious side of that, though, we do need to take a look at, how long can we sustain replacing our infrastructure? We need to replace. Do we really need to look at a long-term plan? Do we do it every other year like we're doing, or is it gonna be every? It's something we, we need to sit down and take a good, hard look at.
How many millions of dollars you wanna borrow?
It's true, Bob. I mean, when, when the newest stuff we have is, what, 50 years old? You have to start...
It's older than that. We're, we're gonna be doing something.
And I've seen communities that have not done anything, but they are hurting now, so...
Wait till you get the next council members to take that one.
That's where we're at.
Actually, I don't know about you guys, but, and gals, but I have not had anybody complain about our street projects, at all.
I've heard only positive.
Exactly.
I talked to Dr. Banks the other day, too, and he said, I know it's gonna hurt, but I need to do it, so...
It's gonna help that the whole kind of...
At all.
He's got a chunker.
But they even, I think, the people I've talked to that live out there feel that the work we've done already has improved the drainage.
I think we noticed last year.
And, and the backups that we were having on Brown, they're, I mean, we know we've got shifted pipe down there, but this is still gonna leave you a lot of that.
Right.
It's, and, and everybody knows it, you know? Everybody's tired of driving down that street and over the top of those pipes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, well, Brown will go into it, so...
Yeah, exactly.
All right, very well. Resolution supporting local authority. Do you wanna just touch base on that a little bit?
Yep, when I was at the league conference, I don't know, last, two weeks ago, they were discussing a number of bills that are going through the legislature that will reduce or remove local control for different items pertaining to cities. They asked, I included the fact sheet for you guys. It's, it's a number of issues across the board. It doesn't focus on one issue in particular. And they would like the cities to pass a resolution and send it to them, as well as our legislators, saying, you know, we know our citizens better than you do up at the state. And we're able to make decisions on their behalf, because we have all these rules in place, you know, the open meeting law, the ordinances at the local level, and, and we're able to govern our citizens.
I think we're way more in touch with our citizens, though.
Yes.
What issues are we talking about here?
There's...
Reverse referendums.
Yeah, that was the big one, and that's...
Reverse referendums.
Yeah, well, there's, there's been a lot of bills passed that include reverse referendums. So, let's say you make a taxing decision, and if they, if there's a certain amount of petitions that come forward, the, let's say the reverse referendum says 2% of the city of Winthrop doesn't like the decision that passes the petition. Then your taxing decision actually goes on as a special item in the next election, and the voters decide whether or not to approve the, the taxation or repeal it. And that creates a lot of issues, because of, you know, you're levying, and so you have to go off the levy for, like, let's say 2018, and if people reverse referendum it, and then 2019 they repeal it, then that just screws up.
It goes back to the 2017 levy, not the levy that they petitioned against. It goes to the year before.
There, there is very little, there, there probably exists something that you can reverse referendum. I think of it, it's very rare, but for this, this year, it seems to be coming up a lot in the legislature, and I think, yeah, I don't know if at the state level, there just seems to be a distrust of local government, but just, there's three or four bills that I can think of where it's come up. I can think of where it's come up.
And the reason I'm asking this question is, is when you look at Minneapolis passing the mandatory, what do you call it, the time off for birth of a baby? And now the state legislature's trying to reverse that, because they don't want a patchwork, patchwork of different laws pertaining to that particular item. Is that covered under this?
Uh.
Because that's my concern.
I don't.
I'm not.
That's why I'm asking, you know?
I'm not sure.
I understand the reverse referendum argument, and I can agree with that, but if we, as a council, were to sit down and say, "We're putting an $18 an hour minimum wage in," you know, because our people want it, and the state goes to, you know, the state says, "No, it's gonna be 15 because that's what we want to do." That's what I'm asking, is that in here?
I think that's.
Because I know there's certain things that are exempt, like, you know, firearms, or you can't pass a lot this level, it has to be done at state level, but are there things that, you know, does that make any sense what I'm asking here?
Well, I think it'd be a fair interpretation to say that this resolution speaks out against governmental mandates in general, so if.
On the state, though?
On the state level, the state's saying, "Local government, you have to do it this way, and this is the only way you can do it."
And mainly the unfunded mandates that they require us to do that they don't supply us funding for.
Well, federal government's that to everybody, too. Make sure the beast.
All right, there's a resolution there. Do we support it? If we support it, I'll take a motion.
Aho.
Have a motion made?
Second.
Seconded. To support the resolution, supporting local authority, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Karen, you are up. I'm only having Karen come up here because it has to do with the van. And the situation there, I was reading from the notes, they couldn't get the van started.
Yeah, they couldn't get the van started. They put the charger on it, it would, the battery won't hold a charge, they think the alternator is also shot. I talked to Dave, he said he would probably charge about $100, $150 to clean it, in addition to putting a battery in and possibly fixing the alternator. I thought, well, I didn't know how much money the city wants to stick into this van, you know, plus he gets 10% commission.
15 bucks a week.
Didn't we agree to send it out there?
We can't get it out there.
But, I know, but didn't we agree to send it out there?
We did.
That's all I'm asking.
He wants just $150 to clean it?
Yeah, we agreed to send it out there for a month, and then we review it in a month, so I haven't got it out there, but it's been a month, so I figured I should update you on. And then Karen and I talked about bringing it to auction, we would have to trailer it there, which would require hiring a trailer and trailering it there.
Can we put a notice in the paper and put it up for sealed bid and open them at the council meeting and sell it for the highest bid?
That's what we usually do. My question is, I have a question about that. Can we, can we legally set a minimum? Like, whatever junk price would be?
Well, the, when you put something out for bid, almost always the council reserves the rights to redown the whole bid, so I would assume we would do that here, so.
I got a battery out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Then we could test the alternator to find out if it's any good.
We've got that discussion, when we see it, the bid is 50 bucks, so we probably use it.
Right, right.
So.
That's what I was concerned about.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was, I mean, Jenny said it as.
No, I just.
It just didn't make much sense after.
What's going on, and you can decide what, do you want to stick money into it? Do you want to sell it at auction?
I'll make a motion that we put it in the paper on the 11th and the 18th, sealed bids in an envelope delivered to the city no later than the 28th. We open them at the meeting on the first, we take the highest bidder, we reject it if it doesn't make scrap price.
How does it work on eBay?
Oh, we're not gonna put it on eBay, this is weird.
No, I'm saying, how does it work if you.
How does it work? You sell a car on eBay, you put it on, or you can set a minimum that you're willing to accept for it, you can set terms, whether they'll pay the shipping, you pay the shipping, or they have to pick it up, all right? They have to pay you within 24 hours in full, or you put it back on the thing, and they take their collection.
What's the charge?
You'd probably be better off taking it out to Dave.
Yeah, on, yeah, doing eBay.
Setting up the account for, excuse me, Dave's Auto Sales. Or another local sales office, not specifying one.
Like I say, I find that we can't get the car started because, you know, hell, throw in the battery.
Well, I wasn't gonna authorize that purchase, you know, to put a battery in it.
Oh, yeah, between the cleaning and the, we already agreed for the $15 a week.
Worse than the battery.
But with everything, and then, I don't know that we'd make that much, we'd be probably money behind.
Well, that's why we locked up this, we assumed we could just dump it, start it, bring it out there, and it was done. What happened is that, if you've looked at it, you see what the insurance, you can't just put it out on the line, so it had to be cleaned, whatever Dave's charging, he's charging. And you didn't have the authority to go ahead and say, "Yeah, let's spend an extra $200."
No, I did not. I wasn't okay in that.
I mean, what's an ad gonna cost us?
Yeah, exactly. No, that's fine, I just wasn't, you know, that's not my call to make, so.
Would the police department use it for?
No, we have no use.
Surveillance vehicle?
Yeah.
That was a joke.
If they want us to look at it, how do we do that?
They can walk down there and look at it.
If they want to jump it to see if it works, and take it for a drive?
What's your legal opinion?
I mean, how do you know if it's just a battery or the alternator?
I think we would be, it depends how much you want, I think it would be fine if someone wanted to look at it, that you had city staff go and give them access to it. The question is, how much do you want staff to be using their time for that? The easiest way would probably just be to put it up for bids as is, you know, if you don't have all the headaches.
Yep.
You'll have to win the paper currently isn't running.
Yeah. If you were going to let city staff go over there for that, it would be, the best way to do it would be say a specified date and time. At 1 o'clock on this date, it will be available, but Mr. Linoy is exact, just put it as is, and be done with it.
If somebody walks up to us on the street and say, "Well, can I try and jump it, just here, see if it goes in the gear?"
I think you open a liability with that.
You're better off just.
As is.
But I should specify that it currently does not run?
Well, did it run when they brought it in?
I don't know anything about the alternator, but yes, the battery ran. It sat, I mean, it's an older vehicle, so it sat for eight months, and.
Ran when we parked it.
Yes, exactly. So, I, the alternator I can't speak to, I just.
Maybe just put potentially bad battery, alternator.
Okay.
As is.
So, what's it worth?
Well, you know, do you want to put that in there? Or do you put it as is currently not running?
Jenny, what is it? What year is it?
I don't know, Karen, what year is it?
Not the battery and alternator.
I don't even know.
Probably in the.
Was it '01?
'01, oh.
All right.
I'd have to look.
Are you talking about the van?
Yeah.
I think it's 2004, it's not that old.
2004, what?
So, what's it worth?
Town and country, it's leather interior, not a bad van.
It's not, it's not bad, no, I mean, that's why I wanted to make sure that we could have a minimum set, because at least junk price plus maybe a little cushion, which would be, to me, would be reasonable, what would be the minimum to take for the city, I think.
Who knows junk price for something like that? I mean, how would we find that out?
Junk price on a car with a catalytic converter in it, 33 and a half.
Mm-hmm, I was just gonna say.
I think it's important not to say, the city should just say, "Reserve the rights, reject all bids."
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll just use a old one, yeah, that's.
Junk prices.
But that's about what scrap weight on a car's worth, so.
What would it be, Dale?
Usually in the 3, 275 to 350 range is about what a car goes for with the catalytic converter in it, because that's worth the most money, it's about what scrap weight on a car's worth. It's down a little bit now, because steel's down, but, not saying that that's.
We'll end up on Judge Judy.
We got Don to defend us, we'll be okay.
All right, let's just go through this one more time, so we're all on the same page. You're gonna be running an ad in the paper, right, Jenny?
The next two weeks.
The next two weeks. We'll open the bids the next meeting, the ad is.
Bids have to be into the city no later than the 28th, which is Friday.
5 o'clock on the 28th.
But I mean, it's going to say, you know, currently not running.
Currently not running, reserve the rights, reject all bids, so it adds is.
It did run when you put it down there.
It did, yes it did, yes, sir. It was parked down there running.
I could use a beater.
It was running fine until it ran out of gas.
And Gordy was the one who mentioned the catalytic converter, I don't, I wouldn't know. I guess I'm not that, or alternator, oh, sorry, it was the alternator.
Because he took, as soon as he took the charger off.
So, that's, he thought that that might.
You want, well, I got a computer, we got an add, a blue book.
What's the mileage?
What is the mileage, 150 some?
150.
I'd have to look, off the top, I don't know.
All right, you know what, we've spent enough time on this van.
Oh, hey, yeah, no, let's spend some more.
I need a second on Dale's motion.
I second.
Did I miss anything?
Okay, I didn't know if somebody did or didn't, I don't remember.
Let's sell the car, you know, let's put it up for, put an ad in the paper, seal bids. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay.
Does it move into our hat?
Do you want me to quick wrap up my?
Yeah.
I don't have a lot.
Karen, is there any?
I don't, I don't have a lot, just speaking about, following up on what the gentleman mentioned, it is that magical time of year in March and April that we start looking at yards again, and, you know, there is some people, you know, I'd say less than 10, it's getting, it is getting better, that do seem to accumulate stuff, and.
Do you want to do it in the background?
I don't know that, if the council wants to, I always welcome input, I don't know that the city necessarily needs to put money into a van.
I usually just pick them up on the walk.
I can certainly, would, would be happy to provide you with the addresses in my next report, so you can, but if you want to do, like I said, if you want to do a drive along too, that would be fine. And it's, none of you will be surprised about the addresses, that's all.
Karen, there's a place.
Drive that around.
Yeah.
That thing's never gonna go away tonight, this is gonna keep coming up and coming up.
It's on Main Street, probably Edo, whatever.
Couldn't resist.
They have a deuce and a half in the back.
Oh, yeah.
And about four pickups sitting up.
North Main?
That's your mom's old house.
That's the old house we used to live in.
Okay.
They have a deuce and a half, army deuce and a half behind the garage.
Yes.
They got four pickups there, full of junk, and.
Okay.
That belongs to Cap.
Yep, I'm trying, just trying to think of the.
I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, but.
Yeah, no, there's a couple houses that, yeah, and we've also been working, Jenny and I have been working and talking to Darren with some of these owners of the abandoned houses in town, trying to motivate them, sort of, either maybe find a renter, or in some cases, build those, because some of, a couple of the houses certainly are probably not livable, just to.
There were some cats orphaned your houses that.
Third.
Has anything happened, or we won't know anything until what, 2015?
No, yeah.
Is that the one on Third?
One of the, that's one of them, yeah.
No.
So, yeah, we will be working on that, and I'll have that, some of the usual suspects, shall we say, at the next council meeting.
Do we want to? Are you serious?
Well, no, I.
I think Karen's got it, I mean.
I would like to do that, I would like to drive around some.
For what?
I'd like the.
I went, I went on a drive around one time, and I can tell you.
If you're gonna do it all together, I need to post it as a meeting.
Karen had already dealt with all those houses, knew exactly where we were going, it was kind of fun.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah.
Maybe Jenny and I and Karen can just get together.
It says 511 bucks at the worst.
I hear that van one more time.
I hear Armory one more time.
I bet.
It's not an Armory.
Well, mine, well.
So, I have nothing else, I will follow up with those addresses, and we can talk further about ride along, and also, I just wanted to, I guess, toot our horn a little bit, and because Kenny Peterson was KNUJ's hero of the month, and I was very proud. It certainly was no surprise, he does a great job at school, and he works very hard to be approachable with kids. Every spare minute, he's down playing dodgeball with them, and he's rewarded tenfold with that, because it's amazing how those relationships come full circle, and so I just wanted to let you know that, I was very proud of him, and I hope you are, too, so, that's, I have nothing else, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank the whole department, thanks Karen.
Yeah, I went to a little bit of it, but.
The task force.
Oh, that was about the van.
Thanks Karen. Thank you.
I'm just gonna keep doing it now.
Yeah, the school task force.
They've had 99 of those already.
Well, it's worth it, we need to do the right thing. All right, we're gonna move on here.
I could use a beater.
The jobs tab on the website.
Yeah, somebody called me wanting to advertise a job they had available in town on the jobs tab on our website, I guess I didn't even notice it was there, so I had to go and look at the website, and lo and behold, there's a jobs tab on our website. So, would the council be interested in allowing businesses in town that have jobs available to post, help wanted ads for jobs on this website, or do you want to reserve for city jobs, or do you want me to take it off altogether?
As long as they, there's a statement on there saying there's no discrimination, that'll, I don't see where there'd be a problem, do you?
I don't see any problem.
Well, the only issue I see is administrative, you know, staffing.
It's administrative work, yeah.
And are we gonna get a lot of the business, I mean, we've got a lot of big businesses that do a lot of advertising.
And are we gonna, and are we gonna restrict the stuff envelope schemes?
I'm not sure.
You know, work from home, make $27 an hour.
Check.
Well.
It would have to be a business in town.
That's what I'm asking, you know, we have, what criteria would be huge.
Winthrop address, yeah, I mean, we wouldn't be receiving any of them, but they can, if they want to send me an ad, I can have Melissa put it on the website.
Put them on, or, put them on, or what?
Is there gonna be an administrative charge?
That's up to you.
I'm just asking.
I think if I were looking at the Winthrop site, I'll be honest with you, you know, from out of town, and I could punch that in and say, "Oh, wow, they've actually got, you know, jobs available there," I might be interested in that. Do we want to charge for that? I'm not convinced, I think it'd be a nice thing to do for a business.
Yeah, I agree.
Should we try it? If it gets to be that we are posting 20 jobs a month, then we might want to start initiating a charge, but should we try?
Just to cover time, yeah.
And see how it goes?
The only drawback I would find is you're competing with the paper, which is trying to make a living, too, but I don't know how many jobs people put in the paper either, because.
What do you think, Don?
Any input from the paper?
From a legal standpoint?
Well, I mean, from a legal standpoint, the easiest thing to do is just have it for city jobs and not expand it out. And there's always risk, and if, there's always risk if you go out to the public and allow them to post that someone's going to get mad at the city and try and use it against you. I think the risk is minimal, but.
Well, what is the intent of that job site? Is it really the intent just for city jobs that are open?
I think it was part of the template.
Yeah, I mean, Gaylord's got it, if you.
But is it?
Does the paper have a website yet?
Um.
Any intention to do it, do you know of? Because that would be nice, is to link it to their classified or their job section on the paper.
Well, we can take it down, and then when they do that, we can set it up.
It's just an idea.
If the city, if the intent is just for city jobs, I'd just soon remove it, then, because whenever we have a city job, we'd post it in the news and announcements part of the website, anyway, my opinion, does that work? the website. Anyway, my opinion. Does that work?
I really don't wanna make a decision tonight, but I mean, if we leave, of course, I'd ask.
If you change your mind, I can always do, put it back on.
Yeah, I mean, we'd rather stay out of that.
I can just, all I'll do is hide it.
I think we should stay on it.
All right.
Okay.
We don't need a motion on that.
Would you agree, Mike?
I would say not.
Just talking about cities. Also, you've seen that ad where it says...
Heard that.
Uh, McDonald's has Pollock. You catch Pollock and there's not Pollock, South Dakota or something. So I looked up Pollock, South Dakota, cause I didn't know where the hell it was, you know? So I look it up and did you know our rating as far as schools and jobs and everything is worse than Pollock, South Dakota?
Oh, God.
Something like, uh, four hundred and seventy-three people. Even our job, I suppose they don't need many jobs at four hundred and seventy-three people. But look it up, I just, like, rate it like A-plus and then...
I don't know, we're gonna call him right now.
He races game.
He's supposed to be helping, you say?
No, I couldn't believe it.
It's fake news.
They don't tell the whole.
That was Kim all right now.
All right, unfinished business. Move it off. No unfinished business.
Well, I'd hate to see the write-up of the paper on this one.
Oh, yeah.
Hilarity ensued.
Yeah. Um, okay, I'm gonna try to not start hacking away during this. I attended the MCFOA conference, uh, the fifteenth through the seventeenth. I included some of the community engagement information for your information, if you're interested in any of that. Um, I attended the legislative conference with Liza Donovan Bauer from Arlington. It was a one-day conference. We met with, Kelly actually came up for the legislative meetings and we met with Representative Grunhagen and, um, Senator Newman, uh, in the afternoon and, uh, had good conversations with them about the egg containment issue. Uh, they did not have a, when we, Kelly and I had gone up there to testify, they did not have an author in the Senate for the egg containment repeal language. Uh, Senator Ekin has since sponsored the bill in the Senate and it's my understanding that it is in the omnibus tax bill, the amended compromise language.
But even the amended will restore...
Yes, yes, mm-hmm. Uh, the crossing flasher is finally fixed by the school. Uh, we have some residents that are having some sewer issues. Um, I haven't heard from them recently, but they have talked to a few of you as council...
Backups?
Yes, on the private side. And so I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. Um, we had a meeting with the Lions Club about the Park Pavilion Project. We're meeting again at the end of April. Um, the Chamber was there, Winthrop Opportunities was there a lot, in addition to the Lions and, and the city. We came to somewhat of an agreement on a design, um, and we all have some homework to do before the next meeting. Uh, there was, you were, well, those of you who weren't at the community meeting, we had about sixteen people there. We had good input. Um, Kelly wants to have another meeting after the open house. Um, let's see, I've actually heard back from Gibbon and four townships with the ambulance contracts. I'm hoping to have those, all of them and get the contracts sent out to everybody once I hear from everybody. I met with Dave Berg on Friday. He picked up all the stuff for the electric rate study. He's hoping to come to the June fifth council meeting with his recommendations. Uh, Dave and Robin Keel are going to Anex. I sent them out a new petition and they are gonna return it to me. Hopefully we can have that on the May council meeting. They requested that they, that it not go into effect until the twenty eighteen tax year and that's fine. So, um, we had a pre-construction meeting on Tuesday. Everything's good to go. Um, spring road restrictions won't be lifted till April fourteenth, but I think they are gonna start bringing some equipment in to town later this week. Um, I did send letters out to all the homeowners with the newsletter. Um, it's on our website if anyone is interested in reading it. And basically it was just preliminary stuff. Put your house number on your garbage can, cause they'll be picking up garbage. I do need to get ahold of the people who have mail delivery and see if they want to pick it up at the post office or otherwise. The construction company will put temporary boxes out for those. Um, and then anyone who, um, Joe had all the, the lines televised. The only, there's only one property on the project that actually has some INI issues and will be given a notice to have it fixed, but he said a lot of them were in need of repair. So anyone who wants to have their private line fixed, we will fix it as part of the project and assess that or they can pay it. So, um, let's see. We put out RFPs for the comprehensive plan. They're due April fourteenth. Um, I've had quite a bit of interest, so I'm, I'm hoping we get some good bids in. The planning commission will review them at their next meeting and bring a recommendation to the council for the May council meeting. Um, Darv Turbuss is also coming to the next planning commission meeting to update us on their requirements as per their conditional use permit. Uh, the charter commission met Monday, the twenty-seventh. There were no new recommendations to the charter. The audit is done and submitted. Ken is going to come to the May meeting, so we'll have a busy May meeting and report on the audit. And I hope you got all, had a chance to go Greco this weekend, so.
I caught as much as I could.
Yeah.
Since when is the city responsible for sewer backups?
We're not. Um, but there, I know that they had talked to a few of the council and I just wanted everybody to know, cause they asked some questions and I provided them with some information, so.
Um, they, they talked to me also. And I, I did say, you know, you know, for, for sake of us knowing what is the, what, what were the charges that, you know, that they incurred. And then, uh, I wanna just talk with Joe to see how, perhaps what that problem is, when I understand it. It happens quite often in town.
Got those long lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's...
And that, that's a, that's an issue.
Well, it's cause they added, they went from private subject to, onto city sewer and, you know?
Well, not in that case. There was a sewer there a long time ago and they, when they built, they just tapped into that.
Years ago, you didn't have to hook up.
Yeah.
We can't do anything about that.
You'll find more.
Oh, yeah. This isn't the first instance of this happening.
Be the last.
So, anyway, that's all I have. Um, it was a busy month, so.
Do we, do we address this, the...
No, Don's gonna do that in his report.
Okay, Don, you're up next today. You're, you're done there?
Yes, unless you have anything for me.
No.
Okay.
All right, it's me.
Yes.
All right, so one issue. Uh, this is in regards to the fire department specifically. Our personnel policy says specifically that when responding to the emergency scene, including fire and ambulance calls, avoid using private vehicles. Now, the, the intent, um, the intent number was to stop the fire department from, the, the way the fire department works is the initial responders will take out the fire trucks and go to the scene, but there's almost, it, it's common that there will still be people coming late. All the trucks are already out. So we have firemen to go out to the scenes in their personal vehicle. Or, or they, they're not late, but they're responding from out of town or something. Just, it's common to have firemen take their personal vehicles out to the scene. And I don't think it was the intent in the personnel policy to ever prevent that because it's understood. It's a necessary practice.
It's gonna happen.
And, uh, besides fire calls, we have sky, skyworn in the summer. It's actually better to take your own personal vehicles rather than have a, that five hundred thousand dollar bumper on.
Fire truck. Hail damage.
So, uh, apparently this came up at an issue in one of the fire meetings is that, uh, firemen would think that somehow the city is preventing them from going out in their personal vehicles. So to fix that problem, what's being proposed is that we just add a sentence to the personnel policy that says, notwithstanding the above, it's understood the city firefighters can and will, in various circumstances, need to take personal vehicles out to fire scenes and use their vehicles for skywatch purposes.
Can you also amend that statement to the ambulance crew also? Cause there are some that live at the farm and respond in their car.
Um, yeah, it's an easy fix. I think that's, um, yeah, I guess there is instances.
Or it's not, not a lot, but every now and then they have to do it that way.
Yeah, so city firefighters, it's personnel.
Thank you, sir.
So that's, that's proposed. I would just like a motion from the council to agree with that.
So moved.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
He's quick today.
You want another one?
Anybody else wanna second it?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
I did want to, um, while you're here, um, there is a date. If we'll, that one for mediation with the other guys. So just to let everybody else know. And before we leave, Pete and Julie, um, would like to set up a time, Don would like to set up a time to meet with us, fire department.
Just to prepare for the mediation.
All right. Okay, water sewer. Was there any, any of these committees that you know of, Jenny, that, that they think they wanna talk about?
No.
Okay.
Uh, though, we're working on the electric project, but that equipment's out a few weeks, so.
Pete, did you have anything on?
Oh, I just had a paper that...
Kelsey sent this out today, if anybody wants to read it.
Read it, fine.
What was that?
Oh, they just, uh, they, uh, the new, uh, generation plan isn't working in, uh, Shakopee. And, uh...
If anybody wants a tour, it...
Well, the tour will be like in April, no, after the, the day after the meeting of the, I think, of the day after the, uh, annual meeting.
Oh, the day after? Okay.
Yeah. Because they haven't got all the landscaping and stuff in there.
But she did send that, that, um, release to, uh, Grunhagen and Newman inviting them...
Yeah, that's so they can go and take a look. And that's so that we can sway them on that.
Right. And we did talk to them about that a little bit when we met with them last, two weeks ago.
Do you have any idea when the containment, uh, package might be voted on or...
You said it was in the omnibus bill and if that gets passed, you gotta be even close to it.
I haven't really heard much about it lately.
Next year.
They don't have any fun at their meetings.
They don't have, yeah.
We sure could use it.
They haven't got time for that kind of stuff.
Could use it, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there's nothing.
You jumped over EDA. I was just gonna say, um, it, we had, we started a committee to promote shop local and the, promote the local businesses. Um, so far we've only met once. Um, Doug and I are on it from the EDA and we have, um, Ellen Anderson and Cam from the grocery store from the Chamber and, um, Peggy Jones and somebody else from the foundation. Um, so if anybody has any brilliant marketing strategies or things you've heard that other towns are doing that are working, we would appreciate any kind of input.
We flatten everyone's tires.
I kinda lit that fire, didn't I?
Well, there you go.
There you go.
We happened to call them the day I went to the EDA and we, we talked about it then and, um, it's something that I think you guys have talked about.
We have, yeah, yeah, we have.
I talked to Cam today and he's, he's willing to participate.
Oh, I'm excited about it. I'm glad.
Yeah, I, I think we're kinda, there's money available, I think, from the other groups involved too. And the EDA has, um, pledged some money toward it, so.
Hey, instead of worrying about what we're gonna do for new businesses, we gotta keep what we have. That's my opinion.
And it's a very good opinion.
Yeah.
We're working on that.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, voice, if there's something we can do.
Way too many dollars go out of this town.
Well, we just gotta promote.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Julie. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just had that on my screen. Wanted to make sure everybody knew about that.
Did, did you talk about, um, maybe contacting Amy Newsome with the county and seeing if she knows what other towns do? I mean, she's kind of a central resource for...
We did not, but I will do that.
Okay.
Is Mark on board with all this?
Yes. Yeah, he was, he twisted my arm to be on the committee, yes.
Are you on the committee, Alil?
No, I'm not on the committee. I'm on the EDA.
Okay, uh, was there anything from fire or ambulance?
No.
Cable commission, if you have a chance to read that.
Uh, Don, I heard the fire department had a very good turnout.
That's, uh, that's what I've heard as well.